No, I mean, I get it. I just, I mean, I didn't know about it. And I'm like, oh, good. It's on social media. Who put black stuff over it somewhere? Right.
My word of the year was going to be retribution.
I don't think that's a good choice, but she.
And then I saw it twice a week. Gary said, no, that's all. Such a sustainability. Retribution. But that's just me.
What is your word of the year?
Are we, we're all, James?
Like when Sean's like, I'm already.
Now, I give in to end of your territory.
Did you do your word of the year?
What is?
Some of the things, some things do not.
I did it. I've been reading. It's always just getting in the car.
Dwayne and Joel.
It now feels like it was far away.
Sending it to.
Tell mommy in his seat.
We should.
If we did.
Even I think we should. I would say about that because it's always a nice thing to do.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our first council meeting of the new year. If you please stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Wilson?
Please bow for prayer. Gracious and merciful God, this new year is unfolding before us. Life like a fresh sheet of paper. It is both exciting and frightening. During this new year, we pray you will help us see others more clearly as your gift. Help us hear others more willingly because they may be your messengers. Help us share your love more freely because sharing your love never diminishes. It causes it to grow. May we see this fresh sheet of paper wielded with words to glorify the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
To call our January 5th, 2023 council meeting to order. Again, with a consideration to approve tonight's agenda, do we have any additions, changes, revisions? If not, entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. All members voted for the motion. Begin tonight's meeting, we have three presentations from guests and visitors, beginning with the Canton Transportation Master Plan update presentation from Modern Mobility Partners with our project manager, Kristen Moat. Good to see you, Kristen.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
I am honored to be here tonight to give my final presentation on the master transportation plan. And I just want to say what an honor and a privilege it has been to partner with city and council and Canton City staff. We've been working on this for a year now. I have not had a project that has gone more smooth with a great partnership with city staff, great input from stakeholders in the public, and just really proud of what this has come to. And I hope you all feel the same way. So tonight, I just want to kind of walk through the highlights of the final report. There are printed copies that are floating around city hall, and Bethany has copies of those if you do want to see a printed copy. There's also electronic version that you can review. So I was just going to go over the highlights and happy to answer any questions you have at the end. So the final report is broken down into these sections. So we start with existing conditions. We talk about the community engagement that we did, the current and future needs process that we went through into the project identification and prioritization, and finally, the final recommendations. This also has an appendix that's associated with it that has some concept drawings and some more details about some of those highly prioritized projects. So we started off with this process identifying goals and objectives of this study. We vetted those with the stakeholders, and you can see on the slide, the three categories that were highly prioritized by the stakeholder group, but all of these were taken into consideration when we evaluated and prioritized the project. The second section of the final report is the existing conditions. We did several different types of analyses. This is just one example of one page from the final report, which is a demographic analysis. We also reviewed several plans that have already been completed in the area. We looked at land use and zoning. We looked at transportation networks. We reviewed the Cherokee County CTP as a part of this and integrated recommendations from that study into this study since they were going on concurrently, as well as the old Highway Five study. Then we went into community and stakeholder engagement. So we had several opportunities for stakeholders in the community to provide input, including a WikiMap, which is an online mapping platform where people could provide input into concerns, issues, opportunities that they saw throughout the, throughout the city. We also held two public meetings right here in this room throughout the study process in which I provided council briefings after those public meetings. And then we had a series of stakeholder meetings that we conducted virtually. So you can see on the screen, we have a sample of the WikiMap, which is down towards the bottom. We did some online polling. One of those responses is at the image at the top, and then an image from, I think, our first public meeting, which we held in mid 2022. We started to take all this information, the existing conditions, the future trends, the input that we were receiving from stakeholders and the public, and put together what are the needs across the city. And we categorized them into three areas: livability needs, economic, meaning how are we transporting goods, those types of needs, and the actual transportation system. We held two workshops, one internal, which you can see a couple of pictures there, but we also held another workshop with city staff and went through what we think the needs are, and did a thorough review of all of those needs to help us start to identify recommendations. The draft recommendations are really the intersection of these three key things: existing conditions, the community engagement, and the needs assessment. From that, we identified 67 total projects. Thirty-four of those projects were also in the Cherokee CTP. Three of those projects come from the old Highway Five study that Cherokee County conducted, and there are 30 newly created, newly identified projects for the city. I showed this slide to you during our last update, but there are several project categories, and the number of projects that fall within each of those categories is illustrated on this slide. The category with the most number of projects is bicycle and pedestrian. We heard that very strongly from the stakeholders, from the public, especially the desire to have more bicycle and pedestrian friendly networks through trails, through sidewalk extensions, through pedestrian crossings. Followed that by some operational improvements, so intersection improvements, speed reduction measures, things of that sort. And then that's pretty much the end of my presentation tonight. Again, I just wanted to walk you through the organization of the final report. In the report, it has details of every project recommendation, including estimated costs. They are prioritized based on the evaluation we did with how well they align with the goals and objectives of this study. And if you have any questions, I will be happy to answer them at this point.
Great. Thank you for your great work, your great work throughout the entire process. We're excited to bring this to closure and getting to figure out how we can get this work done. So, any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I would make a comment that on the city's website, under the engineering tab, is the link to the full report, several hundred pages. We didn't include all of it, just in case somebody hit the print button on the city agenda tonight and blew up their house from, from all the paper going through, but it is online and is available on the city's, city's website.
Thank you. I believe the final report's over 500 pages or something like that?
The, the report that I'm presenting here tonight is only about 20 pages, but we provided all of the backup documentation, all of the analysis, all of the presentations that we made, copies of the boards from the public meeting. So all of that is now publicly available.
Great. Thank you. And we certainly urge our citizens to go and review that, and it's great information and exciting recommendations for this citywide transportation study. So, any other questions? Great. Thank you. Happy New Year.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Next, we have an update on the city's advanced metering infrastructure, AMI project. Michael Trulove with Delta Municipal Studies. Welcome, Mr. Trulove.
Thank you. Good evening. We're here today to present an update on the current status of the AMI project for City of Canton. I'm joined tonight by Kendra Cole, our project manager with Neptune Technology Groups, and also Adreesh Raman, our vice president of operations. So currently, right now, the project status, we received all the meters for the AMI project changeout as of 11/10. With our installer, we plan to begin installs in mid-February. We're working with Nathan, Mr. Ingram, to get that done. The other areas we're working on right now are the gateways. We're still confirming all of the final sites, going through that process. We're expected for the gateways to start shipping in late January. We have the infrastructure for the poles. They are also coming in in mid-January. So once we do start the installation of the AMI network, we're looking at about four to six weeks for completion. Once that completion is done, we will already have the software that Billing uses updated. And we will be a fully AMI compatible project. I'm going to let Kendra, our project manager with Neptune, she does a lot with the propagation studies, to go over some of the gateway locations we've talked about, some areas we may be able to remove one without loss of a lot of coverage. So I'm going to let her take over.
So yes, Kendra Cole, project manager with Neptune, thanks for having us. So yeah, I just wanted to talk about the prop studies and how we chose the sites that we did choose to put these gateways for reading the meters. Here we have 10 sites. Four of those sites were tank locations. So the gateways will go at the base of the tank. You'll run antenna to the top. It'll just be listening for the meters. We use a prop study to plot out and show projection of the coverage that you could expect to get once the system is fully deployed. And I believe, Michael can correct me if I'm wrong, we were looking for 90% billing. So that's why we added six more sites. So your four tanks, and then we needed to identify six more sites to get us to that 90% projection coverage. So those are what we call fine locations. Our prop team, it's an elaborate software, so I won't go into full details, but they plot out locations on this software, and they come up with six locations using a default height. And then a team of us actually come onsite. We do surveys. We find these locations or nearby to give us the best place to set up these poles and to set up the gateways for reading. And so as you can see here, the projected coverage with the 10, so that's four tanks and six fiberglass pole sites, we're looking at 90%, 90% daily projection. That means you should get a read from 90% of your meters every day. And then the billing is a 72-hour read. So from those 10, you'd expect 94% because now you're expanding your coverage a little bit every 72 hours. And then, as Michael mentioned, we did remove one site to see how it would affect the coverage. So if you were to drop the nine, you're only losing about a percent of coverage if we're unable to put up that 10th site. So. And so this is just a map showing the projection coverage. This first one here has all 10 gateways. So what you're looking at, the blue specs there are, represent the meters, basically your water meters. The green, if you think of it as like a Verizon coverage map, that's kind of what you're looking at. So if it's covered by the green, you're projected to get a read. And if it's outside of the green, it's, it's not necessarily that you won't get it. It just may not be consistent, that everyday billing or that every, that everyday daily read or that three-day billing read. So you could still get it theoretically, but the green is what we project. And so this map here shows with the 10 gateways. And then here is map nine. You can see, I don't know if you noticed, but we removed one at the bottom south side of the coverage area. And again, you may have lost a percentage. And those blue dots that it might have been covering, again, it still may get those with the nine, just maybe not as consistent. So again, if we're unable to use that 10th site, with the nine, it's, you don't lose a lot as far as coverage goes. And so here's just aerial pictures of the locations. These first two or four that we're going to show are the tanks. So these are your assets that we are going to put a gateway at each of these. So you've got Great Sky Tank, Ridge Pine Tank, Big Oak, and Bryant Tank. And then the next six here are the, what I call the fine locations. Again, our prop team, that yellow map that you just saw, our prop team put pins on the map, and then we went out in the field physically near those locations, pretty nearby, and found good locations. You know, you don't want to be right in front of somebody's house. You know, the pin may have it in the middle of the road, so of course you can't do that. So you have to find somewhere nearby that'll still get you pretty good coverage. And we rerun the study. So we, the prop team did the finds. We go in the field, and then we do another prop using the locations that we spotted in the field. So that's what we were looking at there. So we got Mountain Vista Road, Marriott Highway, I believe is, we're moving Cottonwood Creek, and we found this location here, and this is the 10 that may or may not be used. So, but it's there if we need it and if we can use it. Otherwise, we'll go with the nine. Any questions?
And just a, just an overview for our audience that might be listening in or here tonight. AMI basically is cellular data coming directly from the water meter. So it allows us to get a daily reading, and it also would allow us to help with things like when a new customer needs to cut water on or cut water off. We can get those readings immediately. We can watch for leaks with that daily information. Right now, we do monthly readings, and so you may end up with a leak on a property that goes for a couple of weeks before it's caught, which can be an issue for the property owner and an issue for the city in lost water. So this technology will help us with that process of getting that information more quickly for the customer and for the city. So right now, we have two individuals that do drive-around meter readings across the city. We'll still have to do some drive-around because, as you said, there's 10 to 11% that won't be caught under this, under this process. But if we have less time in the field, we'll, we'll have someone in-house that can be looking at those data as it comes in on a daily basis. And if we see something that appears like a large use at one time, we can now notify the customer and say, hey, you may have a leak. You might have a running toilet. You may have, you're out of town. You might want to get somebody to check on it. Seems like there might be an issue at your home kind of deal. And so it's good information for us. What, what we did ask them to do when we looked at these sites that are not on city tanks is identify sites that could be in common areas of neighborhoods as opposed to in, in a, in a residential yard or near a residential yard. I think there's an area up in Laurel Canyon that's actually on property that the building authority owns that's related to the golf course. So we tried to find locations where these could go that would be less obtrusive to a homeowner or a property owner, but still get us the same level of data that we need to, to make the process work. So.
So the Neptune equipment on top of the tanks, obviously will go on top of the tanks. So the equipment that's not on top of the tanks, how will those be constructed? Will those go on poles, on?
Fiberglass poles. We'll have 75-foot fiberglass poles that they come in and erect, and they'll mount the antenna up top with the gateways down lower, so you can provide service to them when you need to. So that, that is what will happen for the six fine sites.
Seventy-five feet tall?
Yes, sir.
Like, how wide are those? Or what do those look like?
Maybe, yeah, about the size of a utility pole.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate the presentation. Our last presentation this evening is from the Cherokee County Historical, Historical Society, excuse me. That was not intentional, so. This director, Stephanie Joyner. Thank you, Ms. Joyner.
Yeah, you're welcome. Good. It's good to be here. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I appreciate the opportunity to be here to give you an update on the Cherokee County History Center. And I know we were so referred to by our old name, which was the Cherokee County Historical Society. So I need to remember that as well. I know you've long been aware of the Historical Society's wish to open a county history museum, and in fact, you guys gave us a boost in that journey by selling us the former Canton Police Department building. So thanks to you, the Cherokee County Government, and many other donors, we were able to open our doors on November 5th. Many of you were there to help us celebrate our opening, but some of you weren't. I wanted to share some of our photos from those days. The photos on the first slide are from our ribbon cutting donor event and our heyday family celebration. The heyday event was our first day open to the public and coincided with free admission provided by Canton Tourism. We've welcomed over 600 people to the History Center during the past two months from our events. And, you know, it's our goal to be a true community partner through the History Center itself. You'll see from the photo at the bottom left that we do have a large meeting space, the Ken White Hall, where we can accommodate up to 100 people. We've been in talks with Valinda to use it during the upcoming Main Street Conference, and we also have a full retail store, which you see from the top right photo, and have been participating in the Main Street downtown shopping events. This slide gives you a sense of some of the exhibits and the space itself. City of Canton is well represented with the Jones Mercantile Wagon, the Cotton Mill exhibit, and the Mini Canton Theater. We have Howells Drive-In Theater on the other side, which was also, also in Canton. We've contributed to the Public Arts Initiative by incorporating three metal sculptures adjacent to Brown Park, and you can see those on the bottom left. We've designed the exhibits to be interactive using high-tech and low-tech touch options. We have drawers to open, objects to touch, and stories to listen to, so you can experience history with all your senses. You can hop in the Dixie Speedway car, too, which we found, we geared that for like younger children and found that teenagers love it instead. And of course, all of this comes with a price tag. The overall cost of the project came to around 4.6 million. COVID hit us hard and certainly caused the price to increase due to labor and. And we're not quite done. We do have an outdoor exhibit to finish and some of our low-tech interactive still on the, the components on the inside. So I had a few reasons for coming here this evening. The first was to give you an update on the project, and most importantly, to thank you for helping making this project a reality. We're finding out it's an expensive building to maintain, which you guys probably know very well. So I'd respectfully ask council to consider abatement of the building and permit fees that we paid in exchange for our investment in the project. We paid $11,379 in fees, and I have supplied those receipts to Mr. Ingram, and I understand that he can share those with you as well. So in closing, and on behalf of the Board of Directors, please accept our heartfelt appreciation for the assistance that we received from the City of Canton during the planning and construction of the History Center. We look forward to the partnership of opportunities ahead and are excited to contribute to downtown Canton. And I'll certainly answer any questions that you have at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Joyner. I know I speak on behalf of everyone on council how extremely proud we are of the History Center and of history Cherokee, and the great job you're doing. If you haven't been to the museum or the History Center, I urge you to do it. It's an amazing facility. We're very, very happy to have it here in downtown Canton, and it's going to be a regional, regional draw of people here to celebrate our history. So very, very pleased to have that and pleased to be a partner. So we'll take your ask into consideration and we'll get back to you. So, thanks so much. Appreciate the presentation. We do have one public hearing tonight before we begin our business meeting. And before we begin the public hearing, I'm going to ask our city manager, Mr. Peppers, to review the procedures.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, and, and welcome to everyone who's here tonight. We appreciate you attending this public hearing. We do have one hearing tonight that involves four, four cases. These hearings are recorded verbatim. They become part of a legal record of the case being discussed, and as such, you're required to sign up and fill out an affidavit to speak during the public hearing process. The clerk has already taken that information and provided it to the mayor. The public hearing was advertised in the legal organ, notice to neighboring property owners under the development code via mail, and notice to the public at large via yellow public notice signs at the property or properties that are part of the case. The hearing will begin with a declaration of the mayor to open the public hearing, which will include the case numbers, description of the case, and a summary by staff. Those wishing to speak in favor of the applicant, including the applicant, will be given the first opportunity to speak. They have 10 minutes in total to speak on behalf of their position. Those in opposition will then be given a total of 10 minutes to speak on behalf of their position. Those in support may reserve time to rebut or comment on any opposition statement. Once all parties have spoken or the total time for each side has expired, the mayor will close the public hearing, and at that time, the city council will be free to discuss the case and question staff about the case. In the interest of all parties and to give fairness to both sides, I'll be the timekeeper for each side. As there may be several speakers, we ask that you keep your comments concise and try not to duplicate the comments of other speakers. Please give your name and address for the record before you start your comments. Please address your comments to the council. The audience is always asked to maintain decorum during these proceedings. The hearing process is monologue, so when you're speaking to council, you're just giving comments. After the public hearing is closed, the mayor and council can then talk about anything that's been brought up during the discussion, but council will not be addressing comments during the actual presentation by the, those in, in favor or those opposed. It will come after that part is closed.
Thank you, Ms. Peppers. So we're here tonight for a public hearing, discussion of cases ANNX 2211-004, RZ 092211-006, CUP 2211-005, and MP 2211-008. Annexation, rezoning, conditional use permit, and master plan request for 20.01 acres located at 187 and 295 Gale Avenue, 191, 211, and 214 Putnam Drive for the construction of a residential development. Mr. Green, do you review this case for us before we open the public hearing?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. As you have stated, this public hearing entails four applications. On the annexation request, it is only for two properties that lie within unincorporated Cherokee County. That would be 187 Gale Avenue and 191 Putnam Drive. They are part of the rezoning master plan and CUP request, in which the applicant is requesting to rezone the properties that lie within Cherokee County from R40. from R40 to planned development residential. And the properties that lie within the city limits of Canton are currently zoned a G.C., a general commercial. The applicant is proposing to construct an all-rental community that would contain thirty-three single-family detached homes, twenty-five townhomes, thirty-two quadplex units, and two hundred and ten apartment units for a total of three hundred units. The proposed density for this is fifteen dwelling units per acre. And as I said, these will all be rental units. And I'll be glad to answer any questions now. We're at the conclusion of the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Green. At this point, we will open the public hearing. And we will begin the ten-minute input in support with the applicant.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Parks Huff of the Law Firm. I'm Sam Zlachan and Huff, and I represent the applicant in regards to this rezoning application, annexation, and master plan amendment approval. To begin with, I want to get you oriented to the subject property. This is on Marietta Highway, just behind the Public Shopping Center. So you're going up 575, you get off 575 at that interchange, start heading towards downtown Canton, and it's right behind the Publix. This gives you an aerial view. You can see the Kroger on the right-hand side and the Publix on the left-hand side. It's an assemblage of property that's something I think you should very much consider is encouraging developments to acquire multiple properties from multiple property owners and put them together in one cohesive development. It's expensive and hard to do, but the benefit is obvious. The property is currently zoned general commercial in the city. There are two smaller parcels that are in this county, but the majority of the property is already in the city limits, zoned general commercial. The land use plan is major highway corridor, which anticipates very intensive commercial-type development. And you can see directly to the south is the shopping center, just directly adjoining us to the south. When we met with staff, gee, you know, nine-plus months ago, I met with some council members also, one of the things that came up was the missing middle. That's something that is providing housing that isn't being provided elsewhere in a neighborhood setting that isn't provided right now. So we were challenged, and the plan changed multiple times as we went through the process. And what is unique about this project is that we have four unique housing types within our community. This is the layout giving the property. And you can see we go all the way to Marietta Highway, but a significant portion of that property is impeded with a stream buffer that kind of goes diagonal across the property. So when you come in off of Marietta Highway, you see the northern part of our property is detached housing. And then along the creek buffer, we've got townhomes. So that's two housing types within one community. And when we add the third housing types, again, going down Gale Avenue, you've got single-family homes that face Gale Avenue with the rear-loaded garage. And then at the very bottom, we have quadplexes. And what those are is four units in each building. And then in the center is a more traditional multifamily. So we've got four distinct housing types within one community. It's something that I've been doing this a long time. I've never had a client be able to put together that many distinct housing types in one project. The multifamily is designed so that there is podium parking. So when you look at this, when you look at most multifamily projects that are more, not in your downtown core, but in more of a suburban environment, you have a sea of parking because they're a traditional garden-style community. This has podium parking underneath. So instead of seeing the, you know, sea of parking around the multifamily buildings, you've got the parking underneath. You have generous guest parking throughout on the roadways that go through there. Then you tie it together with an amenity package that works together. And what this does is it creates a complete community that appeals to all ranges of demographics, age, life cycle, marriage, children. It creates that whole living environment in one community. And so that is what is central to this piece. And this gives you an aerial perspective of how we have put the lower density to the north, and we put the higher density in the larger buildings directly behind the Public Shopping Center where you would expect that to see. When you look at the side views, this is the view from Gale Avenue on the top section there. You can see that those is lined with homes that face Gale Avenue that have rear-loaded garages. And so the view along Gale Avenue is the homes, and then behind that would be the multifamily. So that is designed to create a step down, if you will, from the lower density into our project where you have higher density. This is the multifamily building. This is the quad buildings. I think it's a great product that is not really that offered in the city. Now, I haven't seen it anywhere where it's a totally, you know, four living units in one building. So it just provides a different opportunity for housing. And then you have the townhome component, and then you have the single-family detached component. It is all rental community, and one of the things that does is allow the community to be maintained under one ownership. And all the landscaping and everything is done cohesively. They have an amenity package that ties all four of those housing types together. It's not separate amenities for different types. It's all one community. And so this is a unique opportunity to come forward with a project like this. One of the big things that we've heard is transportation and concerns about traffic. One of the things I want you to consider is, how much time do I have?
Four and a half minutes.
Okay, I'm going to leave like three minutes left, so I'm going to leave rebuttal time. The transportation and traffic is, you know, obviously this will produce traffic. And one of the things is, you always look at what's there now, which is basically, this is undeveloped. And that's not how you really look at traffic. And you should look at it as general commercial, it's highway business. Whatever goes here is going to produce traffic. And so the traffic we're producing is not very inconsistent with what you would expect to see if it was developed in a commercial fashion. In fact, it's quite a bit less than if it was developed in a commercial fashion because we all know this property is sitting in an area that will get developed at some point. I mean, it is close to an interstate interchange, close to shopping and retail. And our project is a great opportunity to invigorate some of the retail around there, put housing in an area that's closer to your transportation corridor. And at this time, I'm going to reserve some additional time, what time I have left, and respond to some of the questions and concerns from the opposition. How much time?
Three minutes and twenty-seven seconds.
We do have four citizens signed up to speak. Just confirm, is there anyone else to speak in support of the case? If not, we'll move into the ten-minute section for opponents to speak. And we'll begin with Ms. Tori Tippens.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Tori Tippens, for the record. I am a lifelong resident of Cherokee County. After leaving for college, my husband and I chose to come back and raise our family here and have been living in the adjacent neighborhood behind the proposed area, Mills Ridge, for the past ten years with our small children. The family of Mills Ridge, Mills Ridge family, can y'all raise your hand for us here from Mills Ridge, have serious concerns and reservations about the proposed rezoning as the annexation will be built directly upon the entrance of our neighborhood and has already been seen an influx of cars using our neighborhood as a cut-through road in the past few years. Many of our residents, like my neighbor David, were founding members and builders of our neighborhood as it is one of the oldest in Cherokee County. Our schools in October are at a ninety-five to ninety-six percent capacity, and that does not take into account the condos and apartments being built yet to be filled, like the one directly next to us in Mills Ridge and the Prominence Point Shopping Center. According to the zoning analysis, which I'm sure you've all read and seen, clearly states that this type of build, this is a direct quote, "is not consistent with the comprehensive plan or future development map." This area recommends a low-density, single-family detached housing at a density of one to three units per acre. The request is for fifteen. That is five to fifteen times the amount for the density recommended for this beautiful area of our county. We're not anti-growth, but we are asking you to grow our area the right way. Why would we accept an offer inconsistent with the city's growth plan? In the past few years, the traffic has increased tremendously. And according to this report, not only has a traffic study not been submitted, it would increase this area by five hundred car adage at minimum to the road we take multiple times a day to get to the main road of Canton Highway, the road with that deer crossing sign halfway down where we slow down to show our children the wildlife on the way to school every morning. We have serious concerns about the sewage and the stormwater runoff with such a large area of impervious ground being created. Neither impact studies have been listed. This report is cutting down much of the natural area that will impact the ecosystem, creating excessive stormwater that will runoff into our neighboring properties. We're not asking for no growth, but we are asking that you do it the right way for our community. We're asking that you keep it as it stands, a low-density zoned area. On a typical end-of-workday, traffic is already so backed up to exit fourteen from 575, it is nearly impossible to get to the entrance of our neighborhood. And we're talking about adding five hundred cars minimum to the entrance of our neighborhood. We're asking for responsible growth. We're asking for a fifty-foot natural transitional barrier in one to three houses per acre zoneage. We want to make sure that our drains and our water runoff can handle this type of development. As a community, help us be proactive rather than reactive. Build the infrastructure first so the residents who have chosen to raise our families here can get home to our children at the end of the day, and so our roads, schools, and systems can hold the growth as beautifully as the county that we live in. This proposal isn't truly ready to be voted on. The data is not here to support this build, and we ask you not to propose to vote yes on this proposal as it stands. Thank you.
Ms. Tippens, can you state your address for the record?
Yes, absolutely. Thirty-three twenty-one Mills Ridge Drive.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, just a reminder, when you come forward, please state your name and your address, please. Mr. Jim Horton?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Jim Horton, and I live at two hundred Redfern Court in Canton. And I am here representing my parents, Janice and Clifford Horton, who live at two fifty-one Gale Avenue, which, as you saw in some of these proposals tonight, they are that corner lot at Gale and Putnam. Obviously, you can tell that this proposal for this development would give them a front-row seat to a lot of commotion, to a lot of issues regarding their property. It impacts noise, pollution, vibration, as well as just an overall reduction in quality of life. I agree with what has been said previously from the citizens of the Mills Ridge subdivision. Tonight, as a representative of my parents, I want to voice our opposition to this. It is unsustainable. It is unreasonable. There does need to be a better plan of sustainable growth. We're in agreement with that, and I think this council is in agreement of that. My understanding is that you have moratoriums either in place or in consideration. I'd ask that you do that for this particular one so that at such a time that there can be a better plan presented that is better sustainable, more reasonable for not just my parents, for the citizens of Mills Ridge, but also for the city of Canton. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Linda Steding?
Good evening. Thank you, City Council and Mr. Mayor, for allowing me to speak. My name is Linda Steding. I'm at twenty-three sixty Millswood Run. I am a resident of Mills Ridge. I echo my predecessor's comments about this proposal. The staff has noted that the residential area that is in the county should be lower density, two to three homes per acre. I don't think any of my neighbors would disagree with that. Likewise, I think the commercial property, insofar as the city goes, being used as residential property adversely impacts the city's tax base ultimately because of the difference in taxation, for starters. But secondly, I don't think the city needs to make a practice of putting residential property on valuable commercial land. The reality of this situation is that commercial property has not been developed because of land costs. This project will not front Marietta Highway. It's going to front our neighborhood. In fact, the only thing you'll be able to see from Marietta Highway is going to be the top of these five-story apartment buildings. They show them as four stories, but when you add that above ground, the drive-under parking, you've got a fifty-foot building. I've driven around Canton quite a bit. I've not seen anything of a sort in any of the existing apartment complexes this tall. Having said that, should the city decide to go ahead with this proposal, I would like to request that we get a fifty-foot vegetative buffer from the stream on Hill Creek, down Gale Avenue, around the Hortons' property, and continue down Gale Avenue to where it dead ends. Because everything surrounding this is R40 property. If you were to look at this project on Google Earth or drive down to our neighborhood and see it, everything to the west of this is R40, all the way to Six's Road. So I really feel like it's too high a density, inappropriate for the area. And in view of the fact that the city and the county are trying to look at their future land use plans, this is such a unique development, I think that we are pulling the trigger on it too quickly. I think this is something both city and county should evaluate in a grander scheme as to whether either want this type of development stuck in a residential neighborhood for all practical purposes. Likewise, in addition, if it should go forward, I'd like to request that they limit their construction hours Monday through Friday, seven to seven. Saturdays, nine to six. No construction on Sundays. Likewise, I'd like to request that in the event they have to do blasting, which I suspect they will have to, that they limit blasting Monday through Friday and provide the neighborhood with prior notice that they're going to be blasting. And quite frankly, as Ms. Tippens stated, the traffic backs up so far there at exit fourteen. We can't even get to the front of our neighborhood. We sit in traffic. We can't even get to our left-turn lane. There's no light there. There hasn't been a light proposed for that intersection. And I think that would be a necessity and should be a precondition if this goes forward. I apologize. And I believe that improvements need to be made to adjacent roads. The way that property lies and is situated, we currently have people cutting, making the left turn at Gale Avenue, coming down, I'm sorry, left turn at Hill Creek off of Marietta Highway. They come down Hill Creek to where it dead ends on Gale Avenue. They go right. They go to Clearview Avenue. They take a left to access Ridge Road because you can't get to the lights at Ridge or Butterworth Road. From there, they either go down Ridge Road or they cut through Diamond Ridge neighborhood to get to Twenty and River Green. We already have unsustainable traffic through our neighborhood. Five hundred cars is not going to improve that. And if you try to go out the back of our neighborhood, it gets even dicier at the intersection of Keter and Ridge Road because we have tractor-trailer trucks that occasionally try and make that U-turn from Ridge to Keter. And it's quite dangerous coming in our neighborhood if you're headed northbound on Ridge Road because you've got to look for traffic coming southbound onto Keter, and you have to look for traffic coming off of Keter, northbound towards Ridge Road. So like I said, I hope that you will rethink this and maybe reevaluate the density. It's my understanding fifteen units per acre is some of the highest density requested in the city of Canton so far. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And that is time.
Okay, that is the time. We had one more speaker had signed up to speak, but that was the time we had, so.
Mr. Huff has three minutes and twenty-seven seconds. Give me just a second.
So if I start talking now, I get a little.
Nope. Keep your mouth shut. Now he can start.
The last speaker, let me go backwards for everything she requested. We're great to do the buffer she mentioned, the hours of operation. We will be improving all the adjacent roadways. We will be making any improvements at Marietta Highway that are recommended by your DOT, Cherokee DOT, and our traffic study. Cherokee DOT, and our traffic study. Everything she mentioned, we, we would be great to do. I do want to point out that the property is, is zoned general commercial. I know that there's some comment about that the property is low-density. Actually, there's only the two parcels in the county are listed as low-density. The count, the property in the city is ju, zoned general commercial, so it's not low-density use, not going to be maintained as low-density uses. It's zoned general commercial. It's major highway corridor on your land use plan, which anticipates intensity. You don't push a shopping center on a property that really doesn't support it, because this land has got a creek that cuts through the middle, so it doesn't have good frontage and lie well for a shopping center. So you're not going to get a shopping center that's going to work here. So what intensity would make sense on this property and residential intensity close to the existing shopping, close to the, to the traffic corridors and everything, makes good planning logical sense. Want to touch real quickly on the schools. It was mentioned the schools are ninety-five percent capacity, your school report's in there. Elementary school, this elementary school's seventy-three percent capacity, middle school's seventy-eight percent, high school's eighty-five percent. One of the things I've started making sure I tell every jurisdiction is, look carefully at these school numbers. We're losing students, or they're not being produced, they're not getting there. Our capacities, elementary schools, they, county could actually close elementary schools if you add them all up, they're over-capacity, or under-capacity. That's the actual county data in your report. This is not made up. This is the, the county data, so the school capacity. The suggestion that the tax base, I mean, this is an eighty-million-dollar project, that's a significant task, tax base is actually going to be a higher tax base than the, say, the adjacent Publix or the adjacent Kroger shopping center. So their comment that, that this should not be, you know, converted to a residential. And when you look at where you put residential, you do have an RM fifteen just to the north here, you have some other commercial in, or residential in this area with similar densities, but this makes a logical sense to put the density that we're proposing, because we're able to do it in a unique setting. I know that, that we were challenged from the beginning, can you come up with multiple housing types within one community? And my client has done that, to have a multi-family component that has podium parking underneath rather than the sea of parking, to have the quads that provide four living units in one building, that's a different living unit that might appeal to a younger couple. Then you've got townhomes that might appeal to a couple that's been married a little while, might have a young child, and then you've got the single-family detached, all within one community, not here section, here section, here section, here, and it ties together.
That's all your time.
So we will close our public hearing. And again, I know we had one citizen sign up that we didn't have time, but I will remind you, while we can't accept any more public comment legally, but you're, you're still welcome to email your comments to Mayor and Council before, you know, any action is taken, so. And at this point, I will open the floor to counsel for any questions for Mr. Green and discussion. Ms. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just first wanted to clarify, hopefully everyone who's in the room tonight understands, but clearly some of the emails we received, residents were confused. We haven't made a decision on this. We are required by state law, when a property owner requests something like this, to listen to them, just like we listen to all of the residents. So I just wanted to make that clear. And then my questions for Mr. Green and maybe Ms. Watson are, how long has the land in this area been zoned general commercial?
To my knowledge, it has always been some form of general commercial. At our last zoning map update, which was either August or September of twenty-fourteen, it was given the designation of general commercial. I think previous to that, the high-intensity retail use was designated as C-two on our zoning map.
And then when approximately, I know there's various timeframes, but specifically in the Mills Ridge area, when were those homes built?
I would have to do some research on that, as those are within unincorporated Cherokee County.
Okay. Which roads in this area are county roads, and which roads are city roads?
The property along Hillcrest, I believe, would be a city, part of those along Gale Avenue would be city streets. There are three unincorporated parcels, has been noted in the report, in the request. The one at one eighty-seven Gale Avenue and one ninety-one Putnam Drive, those are the two that are up for annexation, so they would be facing city streets too, I believe.
Right now, just to, just to clarify, if you, if you look at this particular map, the areas that are shaded in that kind of taupe or khaki color, where we're on both sides of those roadways, those portions of streets are city-maintained. So the, the portion of Hill Creek that's up near Marietta Highway is the city's. Anytime you have a jurisdiction that's on one side of the street, it becomes a county road. So all Gale Avenue is a county street, a good portion of Putnam Drive is county streets, and then the end of Hill Creek would be county street on the western side.
So Gale, if this project were approved, would, there would be improvements required to bring it up to city-street standards?
We would require that they meet our standards on the street. In this particular situation, where it would still be a county-maintained street, because the county's on one side and we're on one side, they would have whatever the county's requirements are on that street.
And then another reason I was asking is just that the residents have talked about traffic control problems that they have in their area, but those roads that they're talking about aren't roads necessarily that we have control over, those back-cut-through roads?
That's correct.
Back to general commercial for just a moment. What are examples of some buildings that could be built on the general commercial zoned land that would not require a developer or a builder to come to counsel at all? What could just be started tomorrow if someone else bought the land?
Any type of retail development, such as a gas station, convenience store, a car dealership, a professional offices, car wash. The general commercial is our most lenient zoning category for commercial uses. It allows for a wide range of uses that would not require any action or public notice by Mayor and Council.
Thank you. And then two more questions. Some residents have expressed concern about sewage and storm water.
The sewer and water would be under the jurisdiction of Cherokee County. When the land disturbance permits were to be submitted, if this is approved, those would be reviewed by our city staff and our city engineer in terms of water runoff, impervious surface, detention ponds, retention ponds, all that would be looked at by Ms. Watson.
Okay. And then finally, and this might be for Ms. Watson, there was a traffic study done for this particular proposal. Help us understand how that traffic study can say that, that traffic won't be significantly impacted. What are the differences between what that means in engineering terms and what that means to people who live in neighborhoods?
Sure. So in looking at a traffic study, what they look at is how a development generates traffic. So if you look through the traffic study, it tells how much traffic is expected to be generated. And then they take the traffic that is currently existing and put those together to develop a level of service. Which level of service tells you how the roadway, how the roadway, I can't think of my words, how it, sorry, it's right there. How it, golly, anyways, let me just move on. So, so level of service D is what the city has adopted as our minimum. So that is pretty standard, most communities do that. Well, so if you look at the table that they have in the study, they have a level of service that shows the existing conditions, the conditions with no build, and then a condition with the build. And for that, in almost every single case, there is little to no change. So, so it's basically, if it was a level of service A for no build, it's a level of service A with a build. Then all of the cases are a level of service C or B or better. So that's how I'm determining that there's not a significant impact to the traffic in order to say that this development should have to do additional improvements to Marietta Highway or any of the streets that are existing within the project.
Thank you. If, I'm not sure if that clears it up, but I'm glad you're the engineer. If, is there any chance that a light could go in at Marietta Highway? Is that a city highway? And is it, do you know, like, how far away it is from other lights and that kind of stuff? Is it even something that could be an option?
So are you asking if that we could put a signal at that intersection?
At Marietta Highway and Hill Creek?
And Gale Avenue, I guess?
Hill.
Hill Creek.
Hillcrest, Hill Creek. Okay, so based on traffic generation numbers, which is based on studies done by engineers, it's not actual numbers. So you take those numbers, what is expected to be generated, it would not warrant a traffic The city uses the manual for uniform traffic control devices, and that's developed by the Federal Highway Administration. There's eight different warrants in there, and you can go through each one, and it, it talks about how much traffic is there. Some of them have to do with schools, railroad crossing, crash data, but looking at the numbers that you have for tri, trip generation versus what's theirs now, a tra, traffic signal would not be warranted.
Thank you. We have that same problem where I live. That's it for me right now, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I noticed in the presentation that Noel Consulting had contributed something to the project. I know that the city had worked with that firm several years ago. Mr. Green, I guess this question for you on, on a market study for, you know, the number of multifamily units that were, were needed in the city of Canton, and we discussed this here in the past couple of years, but do you know if, could you, if you know if a market study was done for this particular project? And if not, could you find out?
I do not know, but I can certainly ask the applicant if he has done a market study.
Okay. And a couple of citizens mentioned the fifty-foot buffer along Gale Avenue. Do you know why it's being proposed there?
When city property abuts unincorporated, a Cherokee County property, a fifty-foot buffer is a requirement.
Is required, so.
Yes, sir.
That's, I just wanted to confirm that, so, okay.
Ms. McGrew?
Ms. Green, can you tell me if access would ever be granted to this property off of Marietta Highway, so that traffic would not go through by the residential area?
The applicant site plan shows traffic coming through off of Hill, up at Hill Creek, no access directly from Marietta Highway. As the applicant presented, the property is affected by a stream that goes basically from north to south, and there is a fifty-foot under-stirred buffer, an additional twenty-five foot area that can be disturbed, but has to be impervious surface.
So no road would ever be built over that stream, even if it were bought by commercial and developed differently?
I cannot imagine a roadway from there.
There's Ms., Ms. Watson's.
Ms. Watson may have a different answer.
We would allow an entrance onto Marietta Highway, assuming that all site distances were met, because you can do a, a stream crossing with a roadway.
Would it be considered to have access from Marietta Highway onto that property instead of going through Hill, what?
Creek.
Hill Creek and by Gale, so as, so that the extra traffic would not bother the residents of the existing residential area?
Yes, you could. You would still, they would still be required to have two additional entrances.
Yes, okay. And my other question, Ms. Watson, is for you. Can you tell me the difference between traffic generated by commercial property and traffic generated by residential property? And it just seems to me that residential property would generate less traffic, because people would go home, go to work, go home, go to dinner, come home, but commercial would be all day long. So tell me, is, tell me what is true.
Correct. So for the most part, residential projects do generate less traffic than commercial projects, depending on the type of commercial. If it's a, a doctor's office that's only open from two to three on Wednesdays, of course, you're going to get less traffic for that commercial project. But if you were to put a gas station there or a restaurant, that generates a lot more traffic than a residential. And then it's also very, much more concentrated at different times. For a residential, you're going to look, see a higher generation in between seven and eight in the morning and four-thirty and five-thirty at night, when for retail, it may be all day long.
From nine to nine?
Yes.
Okay. And I was wondering if the applicant would consider reducing the density of the apartment buildings to three floors instead of four of units?
Mr. Green, I just have one question. The, the apartment complex that's being built there at Prominence Point, is that, was that factored in into the traffic study? So it sounds like there's some, maybe not unrealistic numbers, but maybe a textbook factors that are being used.
The apartment complex was added in?
It was added in?
Yes. I'm sorry, let me make sure I'm understanding you. You're not talking about the, you're talking about the apartment that's with this development and not the Prominence Point?
I'm, I meant Prominence Point. I'm, I'm thinking the general area and increase of traffic.
So, no, it would not be in this, because they take existing data and generate based on that, but they wouldn't take data from another project that is currently in development?
Right, so then I assume there was an estimation in coming up with the projected growth or the projected traffic?
Yes, so there's a ITE manual that shows what the trip generation is for each different type of development. So a single-family detached has a certain number, a apartment complex has a certain number, but they don't take, they won't take, they won't take new projects that are in development and, and use those numbers as well into the traffic generation. Now, there is in that, they do take the standard growth expected for this area and project that through twenty-twenty-five, which is the build year. So they are expecting growth, they do show growth, but they don't specifically take a project and say, we know that this apartment complex is going in here. They expect the growth and do it that way. Does that make sense?
It makes sense. Yeah, I was just trying to, trying to see if there's some level of actuals. I mean, personally, I would try to include anything that I see that's in development.
Sure.
But if there's not a, much of a variance in, in what's being projected and what's currently in development, I'd be okay with that, but I'm just trying to, I'm trying to get to a point where I see firm items that are in development attached to the traffic study.
Sure. So my comment to that would be that to have this development, look at another development... look at another development and say, "We've got to include this traffic to see how my development is impacting." We, for each of these developments, they have to pay impact fees. So, this development's going to pay $300 to $400 a unit, and it'll go to impact fees. So, if in the future, we decide that that intersection needs a traffic signal, we can use those road impact fees to pay for that signal. And I think, I calculated it's close to $100,000 in road impact fees that this development, if developed the way that it's proposed, would generate for the city roadways.
And that's in addition to any improvements they're required to make as it relates to their development?
Correct.
With those road improvements they're required to make, the city would require them to make, that would just be the city streets, though we can't require them to make improvements to county streets?
Well, before they can do any work off of a county street, we require that they have something from the county requires. So, on Gale Avenue, for example?
Right.
If the county says, "Oh, we're going to make you do X, Y, and Z", we have to have that before we'll sign off on their development plans. We won't be inspecting that. The county would be inspecting it because it's their roadway, but we would not allow them to move forward if they don't have something from the county stating what the improvements are required to be.
Also bear in mind that the county has been notified that they have not yet responded to this application. So, they may have some comments in their response in regard to roadway improvements along those streets.
Okay. So, they will respond by the next meeting?
Well, they're not required to respond. The county can choose to respond or not respond.
Well, that's not very helpful, is it?
It's not, but, but the way the zoning, the way the zoning law works, we have to notify them of the annexation in the specific project. They have a period of time to comply. If they decide that they don't want to offer comments, we can't hold the case up because they chose not to participate. Now, if, if the unincorporated residents in the room want to reach out to their county officials and say, "Hey, have you made any comments on this?", they should certainly consider doing that.
I always want to state that for the record, so, that could be a choice.
Just to be clear, that's the county board of commissioners.
Because we can't, if council decided to approve the project, we can't mandate improvements on county roads. But, if it did go forward, those residents that spoke tonight, you know, are talking about a county road. So, you kind of wind up in that situation, so.
And one, one thing to remember, too, not on this one, but maybe on the one that shows, Mr. Ingram, the map that shows the incorporated, unincorporated area? Nope. The one, nope.
Other way.
Next one, that one. So, that gray area, toe, khaki, whatever color, is all currently incorporated and all currently general commercial. The county would have to provide access to those parcels, even if it's general commercial. So, if they go to build on that as general commercial, they will still have access to Gale Avenue. They will still have access to Hill Creek Drive as a general commercial project, as well as Putnam Drive. The county could provide some limitations on access, but they will have to provide access to those parcels as they're all currently. And, and that could be done for any general commercial project that occurs there without anything coming before council.
Yeah. I understand on that existing general commercial property. However, if the city chooses to annex county property, then I think the city becomes responsible for the best development of that county property and the citizens who live adjacent or on that property. But, that's my opinion.
And we have similar examples where we've done projects throughout the city. The second entrance at Laurel Canyon is a perfect example of that. It comes out on a county road. We required that the county provide us information from the developer before that road was put in. The county determined exactly what they wanted done to that road, and the developer had to build it to the county standards. We didn't sign off on the project until it met the county standards.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Wilson, I'm sorry for that.
I have two quick questions. The first one is, I noticed that Mr. Huff mentioned that all the schools that would be impacted have not reached capacity. However, whenever we have a project coming to us, we do require that the developer meet with the school board. Has that been done, Mr. Green?
Yes, ma'am. And there was an agreement for the developer to pay $457 per living unit.
Okay. Thanks. The other question I have is that have they made any idea or given any comments about a contribution to the city housing fund?
No, ma'am, not at this time. I did receive an email today from Mr. Tolan, and he asked me to ask these three questions during the meeting. One of them is for city staff, states, "In the coming days, could you please research and provide to council the number of known rental units in the immediate area within a radius of half mile from the subject property, including the three apartment complexes noted in tonight's council packet?" And those three would be Alexandra Ridge, the one across from Ridge Road, and the one currently under development in front of the public shopping center on Prominence Point.
Mr. Green, who did you say is asking these questions?
Mr. Tolan.
Councilor Tolan.
Oh. Yeah, hi, Sean. And what data did he ask for? I'm sorry.
Well, this is one that would come from city staff. "Could you please research and provide to council the number of known rental units in the immediate area within a radius of a half mile, including the three apartment complexes noted in tonight's council packet? I would also like to know the rents being charged for one, two, and three-bedroom units in these rental units." Number two, "What are the approximate rents that the applicant believes will be charged for each one, two, and three-bedroom apartment in the homes?" And number three, "Could you ask the applicant if they would be willing to either set aside 10% of the units for affordable rents based on 30% of Canton's AMI, utilizing $68,000 of Canton's household AMI, or donate an equitable amount to the city's housing fund?"
Those are staff recommendations?
Those are questions.
Those are questions asked by Mr. Tolan.
Those questions that Councilor Tolan wanted to make sure that got asked tonight in his absence, so. And thank you, Mr. Green, because he made sure that, I would remind you if you didn't bring them up. I'm sure he's watching, so. Ms. Smith?
Mr. Peppers, could you explain, just so everyone knows how it works, what, what the school fees? That's not a conversation that we ever have a part of, but each developer goes to the school board. And then, what, what is that discussion like? How do they arrive at a number? And then, what are those fees used for?
So, the, the school district has an office that does forecasting. And they use that as part of their budget process, their capital project, realignment of maps as it relates to theaters for different schools. And our requirement as a city is that anybody who is developing residential in the city is required to go and meet with the school district and have a conversation about the impact of their project on the school district. The school district, in turn, looks at the project. They look at the data around the project, number of units. They probably have a spreadsheet that calculates an amount based on, you know, whether it's a single-family home or it's a age-restricted, senior-only community. You know, they factor all of those things in. They determine, based upon that information, what amount of funding they would like to request be offered from the developer to the school district on a per-unit basis. We only require that we have a letter from the school district that outlines what that is and that a meeting has taken place. We have had projects, multifamily projects, come forward in the last few years where the school district has said, "This project does not have an impact on the school, and the dollar figure is zero." We have had some where the dollar figure over the years has been several hundred dollars. We don't, we don't handle that. We just ask that that meeting take place. If there's a letter generated from the school district, we have a copy of that for our files. And then, it becomes one of the conditions that that's paid as part of, as part of the case.
Thank you. And then, one more question. Could you give a similar explanation of impact fees? And my question is, when we're talking about impact fees being used in the surrounding area and roads, is it only roads that touch this project? Or could an impact fee be used to improve the intersections, say, where we all like to go to Wendy's and Saks B's at Prominence Point?
So, so, in, in the city of Canton, we collect impact fees for fire, police, recreation, transportation, and then there's a small impact fee to administer all of those projects. We do a methodology with a consultant that basically looks at projects that the city needs to handle over a period of time. And it's calculated a fee per unit based upon, and that unit may change. There's some commercial fees that are still out there, but most of these are dealing with residential development. But, that funding source, for instance, if we did a project on Marietta Highway, we could use funds from the impact fee to do a project on Marietta Highway. But, when a developer pays into the impact fee fund, it's not specified for a specific project. It's specified for transportation improvements to the citywide network. And so, as an example, we have just recently used some impact fees to put in the new traffic signal at Teasley Middle School. We can only fund a portion of that project out of impact fees because future growth is only impacting so much of it. The current growth is already participating in that intersection. So, if, if this project moved forward, whatever they paid in in impact fees can be used anywhere in the city's network. But, generally speaking, impact fees have to be used for capacity building. Some things can be done, like signalization, where it improves capacity and flow. But, you know, that's not specified in this particular project. We, council would not put forth a condition that says, "Any impact fees generated off this project will be used directly for a traffic signal at this location." It may not ever meet a warrant study with GDOT to allow for a signal at that location. So, we wouldn't want to leave that money specific to a project that can't be done.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would just like to say, we did have some comments, and I had a couple of questions about, why are we hearing this case? I thought you issued a moratorium. And this, this case, and we have, I think, one other coming at the next meeting. We're already in the queue, in the process, before we did issue the BANS for 12 months. So, we were quite required to hear them. So, it was in process. So, those, these will be, this one and the next one will be the last two for the BANS period. But, you know, we, we did, it's the BANS period for, you know, to, to consider these, these very issues, you know, multifamily and growth, and to review our zoning, and things like we're talking about tonight is, you know, general commercial, better than residential or mixed use. And we've been talking about Marietta Highway and coming in South Canton in that corridor for a long time, and, and, you know, a master plan for that. So, these issues are things that will, I'm sure, be given thoughtful consideration, too. So, I want to thank the citizens for their input and all the emails and questions and thoughtful comments that they've, they've had during the process. So, we appreciate that. So, thank you, Mr. Green. And we'll move into our business meeting. You're all welcome to stay. I know some, some of you may not, may like to exit. If you would like to exit, I'll give you a minute, too. But, if you, you're certainly welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. But, thank you for coming. Okay, let's, let's continue. So, council has in their packets the draft meetings, minutes from our December 15th meeting. Is there any revisions or corrections to those meeting, minutes, or in a motion?
I move to approve the minutes from September, December 15th. Excuse me.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye. Pose name. All members voted for the motion, so. In your package, you also have information item, the review of the November finances, financials. Information only. Are there any questions for that? So, Mr. Ingram is here. Can I answer this? You have any announcements for this evening, so. Okay. We'll move forward with our 10-minute public input. Again, we have 10 minutes total for public input. We have two citizens signed up. Again, if you'd come forward and give your name and state your address. We'll begin with Mr. Thomas Weaver.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Thomas Weaver. I reside at 131 Old Marietta Road here in Canton, Georgia. Happy New Year to each of you. I hope that each of you rung in the New Year with friends and family alike. I enjoyed my New Year's celebration also. Having shared that, the council meeting minutes that council just chose to adopt reflect a troubling, reflect indeed, I believe, a very troubling idea that was floated during the last council meeting. I believe that the city's administration floated an idea that the city's administration would like to use the flock cameras for marketing purposes to look into that information. I forwarded a letter to the city's administration sharing my concern. And I believe that the use of flock cameras for that type of, for that type of thing would be unlawful. And it is my hope that council will take the use of those technologies in our city very seriously and will reserve the use of those technologies strictly for law enforcement purposes that has been mandated by the General Assembly under Georgia law. This is not to be ugly or disrespectful to anyone. This is not to step on anyone's toes or to be, or to discredit anyone's idea for continuing to find new and innovative ways to make Canton the coolest small town in America, rather. It's just strictly one that bothered me a little bit, and I trust that there may be a member or two also be disturbed by the idea of using those cameras for that type of purpose. The use of the flock technology cameras and the Redspeed cameras should be reserved exclusively for a law enforcement investigatory purpose. Having shared that, it would be my ask of council, if council should deem it appropriate, that council look into the matter so that it may be continued, or excuse me, so that it may continue to be professionally addressed. And if council so determines through legal review that indeed the use of those technologies for that purpose is against what Georgia law says, then council consider adopting a resolution to require its police, our police chief, to review the policies that our law enforcement agency has to ensure that those technologies are indeed reserved exclusively for law enforcement use and are not used for any other purpose. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing me to speak, members of council. And again, I want to share in closing that it was not, these, these comments are not intended to be rude by any serious concern based on law.
I think, Ms. Weaver? Mr. Bob Banks?
Good evening, Mayor and council.
Good evening.
It's good to see you this evening, and I want to thank you for your time. I have two subjects that I'd like to address this evening. The first of one is regarding the speeding or the traffic volume and speeding that happens on East Main Street. My name's Bob Banks, and I live at 810 East Main Street, if I didn't say that previously. So, we see a good bit of volume. Did have an occasion to have a meeting with Billy Peppers and Chief Merrifield back before Christmas, and got some good information there. Found out that there's about 10,000 vehicles that travel on East Main Street between here and 575 every day. Great deal of volume, obviously. And a lot of that seems to carry more speed than they should. Now, I know that they've done some speed tracking and have a good bit of records on that. And 85 to 90% of the And 85 to 90% of that is probably within the speed limit as posted along there, but the folks that are outside that bounds seem to carry a good bit of speed. And we've been concerned about that for some time. So, we did meet with the chief and I wanted to thank him this evening in particular because we've seen some more patrols along Main Street and I think that's probably helped us a great deal, just the presence there and in particular with them working and seeing blue lights, not just riding up down the street, but actually blue lights and them stopping people. For whatever reason, it's getting people's attention. We appreciate that. The second subject I'd like to address this evening is regarding the vacant seat for Ward Two. I did take the opportunity to email everyone on the council regarding a recommendation that I would make for Brian Roach to be appointed to that seat. And I've invited some friends of mine to join us this evening. So, if you're here this evening to support Brian Roach in, in being appointed to the seat that's vacant for Ward Two, please raise your hand. Thank you very much. That'd be my point this evening, that you'd give serious consideration to appointing a lifelong resident of Canton, Brian Roach, to fill the vacant seat for Ward Two. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I'll move into old business and item A, discussion of proposed ward map for reappointment of council wards. Mr. Peppers?
If you'll give me a second to get down to the...
Sure.
As we have discussed over the previous year, with, with having all of the 2020 census and shape files in hand, I did ask that our consultants that do our GIS mapping work with us to look at reapportionment of the council wards. The maps don't necessarily look good when you put them on the big screen, so we printed off copies for you. We've also posted copies of the maps on the back wall as well. So, if any of the public would like to see better and follow along, they're, they're welcome to do so. There are several maps back there. The first that's in your packet is our current boundaries. And what we try to do on each of these maps is also give you the population count based upon those boundaries. So, currently in Ward One, there's a population of 12,600 residents. Ward Two has a population of 3,400 residents and Ward Three has a population of 15,400 residents. So, our goal in this process was to bring balance to those particular wards. So, in the agenda packet, we, at the last meeting and again tonight, we had an initial concept to try to bring those into better alignment. So, basically what has changed between the current map and the map that was proposed that's in the packet is to take the Oakdale area and move that into Ward Two, to take all of the area that's east of 575 and move that into Ward Two. So, that would be neighborhoods like Cherokee Overlook, Hillcrest, Mountain View and Rose Ridge, among others. And then take Ward Two further south into the, the older parts of South Canton, just to grow that, that particular ward. So, the map that was produced that's in the agenda packet moves the population of Ward One, keeps it right around 12,000. Ward Two's population grows to 9,400. Ward Three's population strength, drops to 10,000. Option number one was at the request of some council members to look specifically at the southern boundary of Ward Two and what was proposed in the agenda packet. So, the difference here is that we have made the southern boundary of Ward Two, Exit 16 as it comes in off the interstate towards Marietta Highway and Williamson Brothers sample, and then makes Marietta Highway the boundary for Ward Two. So, it leaves Oakdale in there, but cuts off that particular area based upon those two particular roadways. One additional discussion that took place is shown in option two, and this is to grow the, the area of Ward Two and, and try to get a little bit more balance with Ward One. And to do that, this would take Ward Two and incorporate the properties that are east of Bluffs Parkway to the north side of the city. So, that would move the neighborhoods of Town Mill, Park Village and Summer Walk into Ward Two to try to create more population balance between Wards Two and, and Ward One. So, by doing that, that takes the population of Ward One to 10,000, increases the population of Ward Two to 11,800, and Ward Three's population is 9,400. Option Three is a map that incorporates both options, both options of one and two. So, it, it creates that southern boundary along Exit 16 and Marietta Highway and also includes the increase in Ward Two going up on the eastern side of the city to the northern part of the city. Staff took those requests and what we were looking at there and then tried to look back at the figures. So, if we combine options two, one and two, population for Ward One was 10,373, population for Ward Two was 11,459, population for Ward Three was 9,759. So, the last step that we did was what is shown is option four, and that's going to be the map that's on the far end back there in the back of the room. And this tries to balance the previous options and also balance the populations. So, what we've done in this is we've created a boundary for Ward Two, which is Marietta Highway, down to Exit 16. We've moved Oakdale back into Ward Three. So, Marietta Highway truly becomes the western boundary of Ward Two and, and everything south of Exit 16 becomes part of Ward Three. In doing that particular map, that now brings the populations of the wards. Ward One's population is 10,373, Ward Two's population is 10,846, Ward Three's population is 10,372. So, this particular map takes into account the, the thoughts of where the boundaries are drawn along roadways to make it clear for residents and also produce wards that are similar in population. So, as I mentioned, our current map has, you know, 12,000, I'm sorry, has 12,000 in one ward, 3,000 in one ward and 15,000 in another ward. The last option that's provided has 10,000 plus or so on each of the wards. So, it does make those equal using the 2020 census data. Some things to consider, the reason why we're getting the ward map to you tonight, what we would like to do is we would like for council to be able to tell us what their preference is in a map. We would then put that map on the next agenda for your consideration for approval. That will give us the ability to have the maps in place because the way, we have a general election coming up in November and the general election requires that an individual live within their ward for six months. So, if the general election's in November, individuals qualifying in August would still meet the six-month criteria for living in a ward if the maps are in place by, by that date later this month. You'll hear it, the first vote will be next, next meeting. The second vote would be February 2nd. That still gives us six months before we get to qualifying. So, that's kind of the timeframe that we're on. I would say that I'm very appreciative of our consultants at Interdev that do our GIS mapping. They've been great to work with. Anytime we've asked them to move a line, they've been able to quickly do it, get us a copy of it, give us some new population counts. To my knowledge, the last apportionment that took place at the city level was probably early 2000. So, this is a process that has needed to have been done, but now that we have the, the most current census data, we're able to do it in a manner that is fitting for each of the wards. We are not required to take our ward map and have it approved by anyone at the state level. It's something that we can do locally. Part of the reason for that is that the way our city is structured, we have three wards. There's two representatives for each ward. So, there's never a period in time where, where one ward is not being represented in an election. Some cities have six council members and six wards, and so that seat only comes up once every four years. In the city of Canton, if you live in the city, you're eligible to run every two years regardless of where you live because there's always a ward seat up for you. So...
Well, thank you, Ms. Peppers. This certainly has been, it's long overdue. We've been talking about it for, well, ever since I've been on council for six, nine years and it's part of our roadmap. And I want to thank our consultants and staff for leading this effort. I certainly think that this option four, for me, and I think some of us discussed, is certainly the most equitable and to me, like easiest, clearest to understand. I think the most important part of this is our, it's easy to understand for our citizens what ward they live in and, and, you know, where they could qualify if they're interested in running and getting engaged. But it's, you know, it's the most fair and equitable, easy to understand at a glance. But it seems to me it's just a really great solution and I'm glad we're doing it. I'm glad we're doing it for the next election. As you can see, right now, current, Ward Two has been underrepresented for quite some time, you know, to, to the tune of, you know, less than 25% of the, a quarter of the other two ward sizes. So, it's certainly time to do this and I, I really appreciate the effort. I think it's a great solution. So, any other comments? I look forward to getting this new map in place. Ms. McGrew?
Thank you. Mr. Peppers, please relay my thanks for the work on this. I know it doesn't happen, you know, at the blink of an eye. I like the proportions of this map. The population is divided up fairly equally. I appreciate that. And some information that I asked you for probably every 18 months is businesses in each ward, the number of businesses we have. Could I get that in the next two to four weeks?
We should be able to do that. We do track business license data on our GIS. So, I'll sit down with them tomorrow and see if they can pull that, see if they can pull it under the current map and see if they can pull it under the proposed option force. That should give you some idea of...
Right. That'd be some nice data to have. Thank you.
I'd also like to see that, you know, we have, you know, the really good data with Interdev and all that, that maybe we consider, you know, reviewing this in conjunction with the census updates every 10 years so that we don't get so far behind, you know, in the future. But, Ms. Wilson?
I just want to reiterate what Mr. Peppers said about living in the wards. Just because Town Mill may move up toward Two and it's been in Ward One, that's no difference in the representation. I represented Town Mill before. I will represent Town Mill still. The main thing is to have equal representation on this council. We would not have all six members, as you said before, living in one particular ward. This is, this allows us to have someone living in each ward, two people living in each ward on council. That's all. It means that we represent everybody citywide and everybody can vote citywide. Just reiterating what you said.
Yes, yes. Every, every, every council member is elected by every citizen of the city. So, thank you, Ms. Wilson. Any other comments?
Is it the consensus that you like option four? If that's the map that you like, that's the one we would put on the agenda for, for voting for at the next two meetings to meet, to meet the requirements.
Yep. Yes. Head nod, yes. So, thank you. So, we will move forward with new business. Item A, discussion of appointments to municipal court members. Mr. Ingram?
Thank you, Mayor and council. You have in front of you a cover sheet and a memo by our court clerk, Ms. Teresa Fish. She's here. Her or I are willing to answer any questions you have, but every two years, we need to appoint a chief judge, associate judge and solicitors, public defender as well as prosecutors. And in that memo, you have the current list that we're currently using in it. And in a couple of weeks, we're going to ask that you consider approving those reappointments. If you have any questions, again, we're here to answer those or if y'all have any proposed changes or additions to the list.
Any questions for Mr. Ingram on that?
All right.
Thank you, Mr. ...
Thank you.
Okay. Item B, discussion of vacated council seat for Ward Two. Mr. Carlin's seat. Mr. Peppers, you have anything to say?
Just, just that at the last meeting of December, Mr. Carlin notified the council that, that he would be resigning and vacating his seat because of an appointment to the judiciary. The charter states that the council has the opportunity to appoint the seat. One, one thing I would note to you is the qualifications. So, the charter, charter reads as follows. I'm going to, I'm going to read this to you, terms and qualifications for office. The members of the city council shall serve terms of four years or until their respective successors are elected and qualified. No person shall be eligible to serve as mayor or council member unless that person shall be United States citizen holder who has been a resident of the city for 12 months prior to the date of the election of mayor and council members and must have a bona fide resident of the ward which they represent for a period of six months previous to the election to which they are a candidate. Each shall continue to reside therein during that member's period of service and be registered and qualified to vote in municipal elections of the city. The reason why I bring that up is you're going to be appoint, you're going to be approving ward maps in the next two meetings. So, Ward Two, where you have the current seat that's vacated, that district is going to change based upon that ward map. That doesn't mean, however, that you could appoint someone new to that ward, to that seat because they will not have lived in that ward for six months. And the later agenda item we have tonight is the resolution that calls for the elections. We've included two elections in that particular item. One is the special election, which we're required to have for this seat, and the other is the general election that we have every two years for other city seats. The way the special election would work is if someone qualifies for the election and no one else qualifies for that seat and they need all of the qualifications to hold office, once qualification ends, that person would be appointed immediately to that seat. If there are more than one person that qualify for that special seat, then at the election in November, once that election is decided, whether it's done election night or if it goes to runoff, whenever that election is finalized and certified, the winner of that election is sworn into that seat. The other individuals that are part of the general election would not be sworn in until January of next year. So, I'm just bringing that to your attention.
Thank you. Thank you. And I have some thoughts I want to share. I just wrote these down, so sometimes I speak off the cuff. I wind up my foot in my mouth, so. But obviously, Mr. Carlin's resignation, our last meeting was a surprise to all of us, but we certainly wish him the, the best, luck in his, his new career and endeavors. So, and of course, any vacant seat on our council creates interest for, for a variety of reasons. I feel I can speak to this issue firsthand since I vacated my seat early in my last term on the council, the very same seat Mr. Carlin ran for and was unopposed in both the special election and the following general election. We've had multiple citizens express interest in this open seat, and I think that's exciting to have so much enthusiasm for the positive momentum we have created with our roadmap for the past two years. I want to thank everyone who's willing to step forward and play a role in advancing our roadmap and the city for all citizens. As we discussed, however, we will be adopting a new ward map at our next meeting, next two meetings. And after months of consideration and decades overdue, our new ward map will finally create an expanded and equitable playing field for candidates who are interested in running for Mr. Carlin's seat in the special election. in the special election in November. The winner of this election will be seated immediately, as Mr. Pepper stated, and if unopposed after the qualifying period ends, the sole candidate will even be seated, you know, again, after that, uh, qualifying period, uh, ends, so. While we will not take action tonight in the absence of Councilor Tolan, I would suggest our councilor strongly consider leaving the seat open until the special election in November for the following reasons. It would not be fair to change the Ward Two district and appoint a new council member at the same time since the qualifying period of living in the said district for the six months prior would automatically exclude the majority of new citizens in the ward. While the appointment to fulfill, to fill a vacated seat in this timeframe is solely a council decision according to our city charter, it's up to the mayor and council to act with the utmost integrity and the best interests of all citizens. Just because we have the authority doesn't always mean we should exercise it, in my humble opinion. I think we have had some very qualified candidates express interest in the open seat, and I hope they will continue to be interested through November. However, our role is to govern in the most effective manner possible to maintain steadfast focus on our roadmap by planning our work and working our plan. We've made excellent progress in the past two years, and I think a lot of our success stemmed from the fact we've put politics aside, listened to our citizens, created a plan, rolled up our sleeves, and got the job done. We've accomplished over seventy percent of the projects in our fifteen-year roadmap in just under two years, and we're embarking on Phase Two this year. While there's a lot of work left to be done, and more hands and minds are always needed, I think maintaining focus, uh, with an open seat for a few short months is a preferable option. Regardless of the quality of any member that may be appointed by council at this time, that candidate would also automatically assume an incumbent advantage in November, and that's not unfair to other interested candidates, especially in a highly expanded Ward Two. Again, there's a precedent for leaving a vacant seat open until our citizens have the opportunity to select their council representatives for themselves. And the most recent example was the very same seat I vacated when I ran for mayor in twenty-nineteen. In that case, council decided to leave that seat open for as long or even longer because, it's not because I was replaceable, far from it, but because it was the right thing to do. In my opinion, elected officials govern, and our citizens govern whom they elect. So at our next meeting and after adopting a ward map that finally elevates Ward Two to the scale and prominence of our other two districts, all council agree there's no urgent need to fill the vacant seat at this time. So, thank you. Any other questions, comments, thoughts tonight?
I have a question.
Yeah.
So if we were to adopt the new, um, ward maps, and we appointed someone that is currently a resident of Ward Two, the new map could essentially move them out for the upcoming election. They would not be able to represent Ward Two. Let's say, if they're now in Ward Three, for example.
So, so first of all, you can only appoint someone who currently lives in Ward Two and has lived in Ward Two for six months to that seat, because they would have to meet all of the, uh, criteria to serve. That's the first. Second is, the existing Ward Two, no parts of it are being removed, only added two. So if you did make an appointment, that individual would still be eligible to run because they would not made any deletions to Ward Two, just additions. The difference is, you would not be able to appoint someone in the new portions of Ward Two because they not have lived in the ward for six months, according to the charter. Does that make sense?
Understood, yeah. I had it reversed, but understood now, yeah.
Question?
Yes.
I've forgotten, but do you have to have lived in the city for a year and in your ward for six months?
That's correct.
That's what I thought.
You have to live in the city a year, have to live in the ward for at least six of the-
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, thank you. Item C, discussion of resolution for call of general election and special election for November seventh, twenty-twenty-three, and setting qualifying dates, times, and fees. Mr. Peppers, have you taken that?
So what you have is a resolution, uh, that you do not have to adopt tonight. You can adopt it at the next meeting. But ultimately, what it lays out is that we have, uh, a general election that's coming up that'll be held in November, uh, and that general election will be on November the seventh. Um, and that, um, and that we will have one Ward One seat, one Ward Two seat, and one Ward Three seat in addition to the mayor's seat in the general election. We will also have a special election at the same time, and will handle qualifying at the same time for the special election for that Ward Two seat that's currently vacant. Those elections will be on November seventh. Uh, we will utilize Cherokee County precincts that are in the city to do the elections. Cherokee County will be doing the election for us, but we will be bringing, uh, a agreement to you later this month for you to consider for approving them doing our election for us. Qualifying would be held here at City Hall, and qualifying would start on Monday, August the twenty-first, and would run from eight-thirty a.m. to five p.m. It would carry on into Tuesday, August twenty-second, and that would be from eight a.m. to five p.m., and would finish on Wednesday, August twenty-third, running from eight a.m. to twelve p.m. The non-refundable qualifying fee is three percent of the total annual salary for the positions. So for those council seats, the three seats in the general election, as well as the, uh, special election for Ward Two, the qualifying fee is three hundred and sixty dollars. Qualifying fee for the mayor's seat is five hundred and forty dollars. Um, we will have a voter registration deadline of October tenth, and early voting would begin on October sixteenth, uh, for the election. So that's the basic data of the resolution. Uh, you will have that to approve at the next meeting. Once all of that is approved, the clerk will begin working on qualifying packets with that information in the, and the new ward map. Um, all of that information will be available, uh, online and in the clerk's office. Uh, and, you know, routinely, we'll have questions from individuals who are interested in running, and they don't necessarily know which ward they live in, and we'll work through that process and make sure that they have the qualifying packets available to them. The qualifying would not be until the last week of August.
Okay, thank you. And just to confirm, and you may have said this, uh, but the, uh, the special election for Mr. Carlin's seat, that is to fulfill the remaining three-year terms of his term, correct? Because he was-
So at, at that, at that point of the election, if there's only one person that qualifies for the seat, the person would take office-
Right.
-upon being sworn in after qualifying in August. They would serve the remainder of twenty-twenty-three as well as twenty-twenty-four and twenty-twenty-five.
Right.
That seat would be up for a general election in twenty-twenty-five. Um, if, if there's an election, that person would take over in November. If there's a runoff, that person would take over in December, but they would continue to serve until the twenty-twenty-five-
Right.
-in that particular seat.
Yeah, so two plus whatever, so, okay. Awesome, thank you.
And I would also note, when qualifying, the candidate would need to specify if they're going to be running for the special election, just the remaining term, or if they're running for the general.
But that's how they designate, they're running for special election, which would be Mr. Carlin's vacant seat or the general, uh, seat, Ward Two.
And they would not be able to qualify for both seats.
Right. Okay. Ms. McGrew?
Since the special election is for a partial term, is the fee for the, uh, application fee prorated?
No, it's the same fee.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
I, I do think, however, on the ballot for the actual election, there will be two ballots for the voter. One will be the general election ballot, and one will be the special election ballot. But seeing as how there's only city elections this time, unless there's a called county election, there shouldn't be confusion by the voter at the actual polling location.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Peppers?
I don't have any, any items.
You really? Okay. That's a first.
Well, I have a question for Mr. Peppers.
Certainly.
How's that light over at Teasley coming?
The polls are in. Bethany can answer that one, Ms. Watts.
So, everything is good to go except for, we are waiting on the modem. Um, Brandon Poole has talked with DOT about getting the modem, so I'm not exactly sure when it'll be here. We're also waiting on a timing. Um, so we have a contractor that will come out and do timing on the, the light. I don't know exactly when that's gonna happen, but I would expect it in the next month. So, I know that's not exactly what you wanted to hear, but, um, it's just-
What's another month at this point, Ms. Watts?
Well, and, and in addition, once the light goes into service, it will be in a blinking mode for a period of time before it can go into actual service with, with the full light.
Correct.
Do we think it will be operational this school year?
Yes, definitely.
Great.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Ms. McGrew?
I have a question for Mr. Peppers. Sitting here, um, thinking about the ward maps, another question came to mind. Will the boards and commissions be affected by the redrawing of the ward maps because council appoints members according to the wards?
No, um, the member, so there's a yes and a no answer to that.
Right.
The, the yes part of the answer is, new members who are elected, um, can choose based on ward. I don't know of any particular committee in the city where we have made it a requirement that the individual be from a ward, but traditionally, council members have tried to appoint individuals from their ward to that seat. So the only difference would be that whomever comes in in a special election, as with any other elections, could continue to utilize the appointments that Mr. Carlin had put in place, or that individual could appoint new people, because the individuals serving on boards and commissions serve at the pleasure of the elected official that appointed them. Uh, so what we have done in the past, uh, as, as, as a council member rotates off, we have notified their appointments that the council member has rotated off, and that their term may come to an end if they're not reappointed by the new member for that seat. So what we would do in this case is, the individuals who are currently serving on the board, uh, that were Mr. Carlin's appointments, would continue to serve until a new, a new, uh, council member is seated and they make a determination that they wanted to change someone or what have you. That would be to their discretion.
Thank you.
Thank you. And on, on my items, I did want to remind, uh, council that we do have, uh, some, some boards and commission seats open, and, uh, we'd like to have, uh, your suggestions for appointments by the next meeting and, and point. You know, again, and the goal there, again, the, the guide was, you know, we've been trying to move to, to have council members make appointments, you know. My ward is a general guide, it's not a requirement. Uh, Mr. Waterman and I had a, the conversation about this yesterday, the last day or two, about the ultimate goal is to appoint the best people possible and, 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 uh, get these jobs done in the best manner possible. And the exciting thing about having all these, uh, new people engaged and interested in serving is like, we have, uh, you know, can have some great conversations about where do you want to serve, um, regardless of how you want to serve the city and on what level, so. Uh, but, uh, we have some, some exciting openings, and, uh, let's try to get those in place. Um, also, since this is our first business meeting of the year, uh, it's my responsibility to appoint a mayor pro tem for the, for the year. Uh, I want to thank, uh, Councilor McGrew for serving, uh, this, this past year. Thank her for service. So I started with Ms. Wilson in two, twenty-twenty, and, uh, Ms. McGrew, this, this past year. And, uh, is, uh, I'd like to nominate, um, Councilor Schmidt to serve as, uh, uh, twenty-twenty-three, um, uh, mayor pro tem. And, uh, it's, we're moving down the list here, but she'll do an excellent job. And so far, I haven't had to miss a meeting, but, you know, it could happen anytime now, so. But, uh, but I'd like to ask for a second of that, second for that nomination and, uh, a vote tonight, so.
Second.
And so we have a nomination and a second. All of you, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? All members voted for the motion, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Schmidt. Um, and then one final thing, I just want to remind our citizens who are here tonight, the ones wa, uh, watching, that, uh, I will be delivering the annual State of the City at our next meeting, January nineteenth. So we'll be reviewing some of the accomplishments from last year and talking about some of the, uh, exciting things to come in our roadmap two-point-O, and some, making some, some hopefully some exciting and fun announcements of some great things that'll be happening this year. So please join us for that. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn for tonight.
I move to adjourn.
Second. All of you, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? We are adjourned. Thank you.